Call this Green Hills Council Meeting of February 27th. The order, clerk call the roll.
Mr. Cavode?
Here.
Ms. Walther?
Here.
Ms. Hermes?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Dries?
Here.
And Mr. Halter?
Here.
All right, we have a prayer by.
May we ask you to send your spirit of servanthood upon all of us gathered here this evening to do your work for the benefit of all in our community. We ask you to bless our elected and appointed officials so they may deliberate with wisdom and act with courage. Bless the members of our community who come here to speak before council so they say their cause with honesty and humility. May we ask you to bless us all that everything that we do here tonight will move you to welcome us one day into your kingdom as good and faithful servants. We ask this in the name of our brother Jesus, amen.
Amen.
Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Okay, we have minutes of the regular council meeting of January 23rd and the council
will treat it February the 3rd. Do we have any corrections?
Yes, on page four of the January 23rd minutes, it looks like it said the next safety committee would be the 13th. I know I had said the 20th a few times, but I thought I corrected myself to the 27th, so I would like that to be updated.
Nothing else, minutes stand approved. This is the time for citizens to comment on matters before council. When recognized, please come forward to the lectern, give your name and address and state your comments or questions. This is not intended to be a dialogue with council or village staff. If you have questions, these questions will be recorded and referred to the manager's office for disposal. This will allow time for thoughtful and thorough consideration to be given to each of these questions. Council meetings are recorded for ease of transcription. Comments are limited to three minutes. Anybody?
Have they had a panel?
Is there not one already?
Today's date. 27. How good evening. Do I have your attention?
My name is Pat Andron. I live in the war zone of Chalmers Lane, 32 Chalmers Lane, which is a little bit over an acre of mud surrounding my home that is now sweeping over the sidewalks. When I first got here, I tried to adjust your clerk or your acting clerk, I don't know if he's ever been actually appointed, about correcting the minutes regarding my comments that I made at the last meeting. It had nothing to do with my opinion per se. I was reading to this council from a letter that was written to the residents of Green Hills by a federal agency, the National Park Service, and I would think that the records of council should reflect the reality of that. But also I'd like to point out that there was a shameful communication from Ms. Kovak to the director of the national or the president of the National New Deal Preservation Association. The content of this letter was so disgraceful that really warranted an apology, I think, from every one of you to be directed to these people who are committed to historical preservation because obviously you people are not. Tomorrow night, we will have a second meeting of our civic association formation group at the North Central Library at 111 990 Hamilton Avenue, which is right next to the sheriff's office. It'll start at 6:45 PM and go to 8:45. I'm hoping that anyone listening will be welcome to come to meet your neighbors. And so many people have been concerned about various problems in this community for quite some time. There's actually a Facebook group that's devoted to issues and concerns. I'll read off a few of them. High real estate taxes, filing for a reduction to your market valuation with the board of revisions. And by the way, the deadline to do that is April 2nd. So at these civic association meetings, we will have the forms and we will be willing to coach people on how to go ahead and process those applications. We have high personal income tax rates, loss of services, our trash collection is now stuck on our water bill. And a question has been raised, how did this happen? That seems like it's a taxation that was not voted on because you're taking money that our taxes pay into the general fund because you had a non-voted debt mortgage payment to make, couldn't make it, so you stuck the trash collection under the shoulders of all the residents. Now, I'd like to know exactly what legislative action. These are questions for you to answer, Ms. Kovak. When did this legislation act take place and is it legal, Mr. Forbes?
Okay, anyone else? All right, moving on, reports of village officials, the municipal manager, Yvonne Kovak.
Thank you, Mayor. There's a couple of items that I wanted to mention tonight. First involves the Greater Cincinnati Water Works project that we had anticipated to occur in 2019. They have advanced that schedule and they were going to actually be going out to get in May. So we will, actually, I think they want to start seeing construction this year, correct? So that's kind of good news for us. And also want to let you know, if you didn't notice, that potholes were filled all through town today in some of our parking lots as well. So that's all I have right now.
Comments or questions?
Just a quick question. Is there plans to plant grass where the demolition was?
Yes, yeah. They want to finish the sidewalk and they need at least 48 hours of no rain.
Sure.
In order to be able to disperse down through the sidewalk. Then once that's done, it'll be.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Kovak, when they are doing some of the repairs on the road, which I noticed already today, in fact, it has been done twice at the same spot. It hasn't worn out or eroded with the rain. Are they also going to do some of those partial repairs around the American Legion area?
Well, they did pothole repairs in the American Legion lot as well, yes.
Today?
Today.
Oh, okay, great.
Just today.
Okay, moving on, law director, Jeff Forbes.
Thank you, Mayor. Only one issue to report on tonight, and that's the status of the litigation with respect to House Bill 49, centralized collection matter. That's the only thing I have to discuss. I can do it now or I can do it when that related legislation comes up on the agenda. Whatever.
Well, why don't we wait till we hit that ordinance? Okay. All right. Acting clerk of council, David Lumsen.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolutions 2018-01, 2018-02, 2018-3, 18-03, 04, and 05, we're all posted as required.
Chief police, Neil Fordham.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things that our village residents were kind enough to help us set up last year and council ratified this was a community fund that we've used when officers, particularly in the late afternoon or evening hours or overnight, run into persons who are in need. One such instance happened within the last 30 days and it was through social media that actually posted on Nextdoor Green Hills. Was a community member who was in need of shoes. She wanted to get out and be active again and she didn't have shoes that would allow her to do that. We were able to buy her a new pair of shoes through that community fund, posted that, and that spurred on some more generosity in the community. I think we expended about $30 through that fund and in turn received about $500 in donations to further those kind of efforts. So we'll continue to be on the lookout for that and we continue to be very grateful to the members of our community who seemed just overly generous in the concern for their fellow citizens. Unfortunately, the drug menace has continued. It was over a year in 17 than it was in 16. And 16 was a banner year in terms of statistics. There were 258 cases investigated by the heroin task force, of which we're a member. That was a 57% increase from the previous year. There were 228 heroin or opiate overdose death investigations, which was a 60% increase. We're, I believe, following the right direction. We have an officer that is affiliated now with DART, the Regional Drug Abuse Reduction Task Force, and we continue to be very active in those efforts. It has been a violent year so far for police officers nationally. The two closest to us were Officer Anthony Morelli and Officer Eric Joring, who were killed in Westerville, a suburban community north of Columbus. There have been 12 officers gunned down in the line of duty so far this year as compared to four the same time period last year. Officer Zach Clark volunteered to go up and he did participate in that funeral procession. Of course, that violence was followed by school violence in Florida and that tags into the planning that we've been involved with, with Wentonwood School District and the construction of the new schools. There was a meeting just very recently on the 20th. Councilmember Dries, Ms. Kovak, and our sergeant, Luke, were there and will continue to be involved, particularly in aspects of traffic safety and more importantly, school safety within the schools. We recently, within the last few weeks, applied for another bike helmet grant that was very successful last year. All of the helmets that we received last year, we distributed out, so we're looking to receive a similar or even increased number before summer arrives and we can get those out into members of our community. Training is a very important aspect of what we do. 2017 classroom training included 20 hours per officer that had to be completed by state mandate and we completed an average of 35 hours, about 175% over the mandated training. As a result of meeting that training documentation and requirements, Lieutenant Ward submitted a training reimbursement request to the state and we'll be receiving a reimbursement from them in the amount of $3,460 back into our general. We have set a goal of getting this completed. This year, we have 61 new general orders that will comprise our new manual. We have 47 of those now complete with 14 left to go and we're continuing to work on those and I spent quite a few hours on those as a matter of fact today. As I mentioned, we've had very generous citizens, total $500 received this year or this month in contributions and assistance for that. Six during the month of January, we investigated five accidents. That's up from one from the same time last year. Four crimes, down from five last January. 182 other incidents. We had 696 contacts with citizens. 249 of those were dispatched or received by telephone and 347 of those were self-initiated by police officers. We provided assistance to the public in 147 instances. We assisted other agencies 28 times. We made 37 criminal arrests and 76 traffic arrests. Thank you, Mayor.
Comments or questions to the chief? My report, the only thing I have is the court receipts for the month ending January. The amount distributed to the county was $67.50. State of Ohio received $1,869.50. Village of Green Hills received $8,375.72. Looks like that, change that. $8,250.72 for a grand total of $10,187.72. Pass that to David for this. That's all I have. Community reports, finance and audit, Mr. Dries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did have a finance and audit committee meeting. We ended the year 2017 with a general fund balance of $1,163,558. So that million one is a factual number. However, there are some encumbrances of about $300,000 for the demolition project and the restrooms. So it's, when you think about the money available, it is an overstated number. We have requested the tax advance from the county. There's a supplemental tonight. There's three elements to that and we'll save the commentary until then. We, the aggregate market value for propping Green Hills, I'm sorry, hold that thought. We had a, we looked at the long-term forecast for the village. We've done that now for the last several years. We have had discussions about the slide in the amount in the general fund and we had preliminary discussions because the general fund is supporting the police fund and as we continue, it has less of an ability to do that. So we had initial discussions about the potential to, what are the other revenue sources or how could we change that trajectory? And one of those potentials is a new levy on the ballot potentially. Roughly two and a half mils would generate $125,000. We have retired in the last few years two levies. So most people's taxes, if their home has not changed and its valuation has actually gone down to the village, so we'll be further exploring that, but we've at least started the exploration of how do we fund our police officers? And we have a Kalia certified, very good police department. We don't want to spend all our time training people for other departments and if we don't improve the way we pay our people, we're at a greater jeopardy of losing people. So that's something that we just have to face the reality of and we have to look at the rest of our employees too. As far as, the books are closed for January. Really, we're very early into the year and there's nothing significant as far as a shift from last year January to this year January, except the income tax, it's up six and a half percent, which is quite favorable. So everything else looks to be timing issues early on. Fund balances are where we would expect them to be and amount expended as to, the amount appropriated is very close to last year too. So early in the year so far, but where we would expect to be. And that concludes my report.
Comments or questions?
Just a comment, I'd like to add on a little bit to the need for the levy for the police department. I think it's really important, we see the news and we're aware of the drug epidemic, but you know, we can get numb to that and if anybody sees it firsthand, it's the police department. And to have such an additional burden on a small police force or any police force, it's just really important to realize, we don't take lightly asking for money or levies. We really want to make sure there's a good, sound justification and I just want to say that fighting the drug epidemic locally as well as nationally is huge in my opinion, but just want to add that in.
You know, if we all sat and said, what's the number, if local government could only do one thing, I don't know how many people would say public safety, but I for one would. And I don't know what trumps public safety, so we want to be responsible with every dollar, but this may be the time to look at that. Early on, we've still got some work to do.
And the governmental affairs, laws and rules, so Jack Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. The committee on intergovernmental affairs and laws and rules met yesterday morning, took up the topics as follows. We touched on and asking for an update where we stood as far as license agreement on the shopping center signage. There is no further movement, waiting for feedback from the shopping center owner. We have a draft copy of authorization and indemnification release for the use of private golf carts on the golf course. That's being reviewed by relevant individuals in that and so that, you'll see a copy of that at some point along the way. We discussed two items that are on the docket tonight for first reading. First is the market stand code section, repealing that section to handle the market stand as a normal rental facility as any other village owned property, as well as tethering law or ordinance and those both will be on. The forest new business, a medical marijuana ordinance was presented. Planting commission because it involves zoning. We also had a discussion on two other subjects, that being cars parked on sidewalk for an extended period of time. There was also a discussion concerning the use of either speed cameras or red light cameras primarily at the stoplights on Wenton Road. So unless you have any questions, that's the conclusion of my report.
Just a clarification on cars parked on sidewalks. Are we talking when they're on the driveway going across the sidewalks or do you mean on the planting strip and sidewalk?
What we're speaking of is the driveway and sidewalk, yeah.
Okay, so not on yard, but on?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there are some that are close to abandonment, that are growing grass under them or around them or something. Okay, community development, Jeff Halter.
Yes, I talked to a couple of the business owners about the shop, shopping center signage, got their opinion. There's obviously a lot that is not in their control on what happens with the signage. We approved one round with, and then we pass that on to the shopping center owner and then he had an alternate idea that didn't seem to work out well with our current situation. So I know that the shopping center or a couple of the businesses that I talked to are interested in having a sign or at least a couple of signs if possible for the shopping center. So I'm hoping that we can, the owner can, you know, get back to us and we can find out what makes sense given the context of everything. So, but it was good to hear their opinion. And just a small plug, there's nothing like supporting local businesses. There's a lot of, we have a lot of momentum that goes to the big retail businesses out there. They have buyer's cards and all kinds of things like that, but whenever you can, and I try to practice this myself, if you can shop locally, it sounds kind of like a can term, but maybe think of it as support your neighbors and those that are supporting your community. It's always a good idea and one of the best from a community development standpoint. Still working on the new business development packet for new businesses that come into our area. And then we have a scheduled meeting for community development on March 29th, but I did hear of one conflict that we might have to adjust that, but we'll let everyone know in due time. That concludes my report.
Comments or questions? All right, service and streets, Jeff Cavode?
Nothing to report at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, all right. Safety, Melanie Broton, Hermes?
Safety committee met tonight at 5:15. Everyone was in attendance. The old business we discussed is, we did talk about the traffic flags used across the street. We had asked the chief to research that a little bit more and he had communicated that he had been in contact with Northside and that they had done a study and that actually increasing signage was a better solution. There had been some examples of how the flags were being abused by the public that might cause more harm than good, so they cautioned against the traffic flags. The committee has asked Mr. Dries along with the manager and the police chief to continue to look at the traffic in conjunction with the school project. As we know, school buses and the new school campus is going to create a greater impact on our few stoplights and few intersections, but to make sure to keep that in mind when discussing new construction in the school project. And also, I know last year we had applied for the Wenton Road grant or loan for the Island median project and we wanted to continue to make sure that that was addressed in that kind of project if we did receive funding. I know we were going out for it again this year, especially at the Wenton Farragut and Cromwell and the Wenton Ingram and Damon intersections. Another old business item we discussed was yellow lights at the end of this driveway. When we had this across the road poles and wires taken down, one of the things we lost was the yellow flashing light that you can see on northbound and southbound on Wenton Road that the fire department utilizes. Chief Spath reminded us about this and one of the things he mentioned was, he knows that we're looking at possibly including it in the Wenton Road grant, but getting some kind of short-term solution in place now while we wait for something longer term. And one of the things he suggested was adding just a flashing light. Currently, the pole is up and the flashing light you can see from the driveway, adding a second one so you can see it. It would be on the east side of the road and you could see it when you're heading northbound on Wenton. That way you'd have the light there. Or if that's not possible at this time, just to turn this, the light that's from the driveway around so that they can see it on the road. He does, would like to keep the light facing his direction, but he sees that the need right now currently is greater for the street traffic opposed to the internal traffic. They do like to know that they're working, but so he would prefer a, if we were to do a temporary solution and the manager's going to look at it, to do an additional light if possible, but if that's not possible, somehow rotating the current light so that you can see it. It would be on the east side next to the driveway out here and you can see it as you're heading northbound on Wenton. And again, we also asked that she continue to look at that for a long-term solution, but getting a short-term solution done quick is something we first are interested in. We did discuss the parking issue that we've had on the west side of the town, of the village and also on the F section. Since we have updated the code last year, we have had no complaints, so at this time we're having no further action unless we receive more feedback from residents. right now currently is greater for the street traffic opposed to the internal traffic. They do like to know that they're working, but so, he would prefer a temper, if we were to do a temporary solution, and the manager's going to look at it, to do an additional light if possible, but if that's not possible, somehow rotating the current light so that you can see it. It would be on the east side next to the driveway out here, and you can see it as you're heading northbound on Winton. And again, we also asked that she continue to look at that for a long-term solution, but getting a short-term solution done quick, quick is something we, as far as are interested. We did discuss the parking issue that we've had on the west side of the town, of the village, and also on the F section. Since we have updated the code last year, we have had no complaints. So, at this time, we're having no further action unless we receive more feedback from residents about this concern. Some new business that we discussed, Chief Spath mentioned that the new fire truck is here, and that it is well-meeting his expectations, if not exceeding his expectations. And currently, the old engine and rescue truck are both for sale. So, if anyone's interested in buying a really big piece of equipment, a vehicle that you need a CDL for, please, please contact us, or actually Chief Spath. He is going to look at pushing that a little bit more, and hopefully, we'll see some action on that soon. And then, Yvonne Kovak mentioned the water main project and how that's going to hopefully get started this year. It's going off bid this May, and part of that project is going to have 16 new fire hydrants for the Village of Green Hills, so that's exciting. The fire chief also mentioned that he's been continuing to inspect new areas at the shopping center. At this time, he could not approve the areas that he inspected as seen, but he gave feedback and is waiting on compliance, and he will keep us advised as he continues to undo the inspections. He also let us know that the fire department has applied for $165,000 for a fire grant for their air supply, for their breathing apparatus. And then, they did receive a grant from the Bureau of Workers' Comp for a motorized cot. I know it sounds like something that's not that expensive, but these are actually high-dollar equipment. It's about $40,000, but this helps a lot of workers' comp claims, not just here, but the Ohio Bureau of Comp has done a lot of studies on this, as on lifting of cots, and this helps alleviate that as the cot gets hooked into the vehicle and the ambulance does the lifting for everyone so as to lessen the damage or motions that cause workers' comp injuries. He says we have it in one of our ambulances, and he's looking at ways to get it into our second ambulance. Chief Furman brought up that just today, he, the police department was contacted by a resident on Ireland that they would like a handicapped spot on the street due to the fact that they, they're one of the houses that have the narrow driveways with the walls, and with a handicapped individual, it's hard to pull in and be able to get in and out without hitting the walls. One of, and with the home health providers, since only one person can park in the driveway if they park far enough back to avoid the walls, the home healthcare provider is not often finding good parking. One of the things we suggested is, I did, we did discuss what the policy is on if someone is blocking a residential driveway. So, if someone is blocking your driveway, you can complain, but the, that is a complaint-driven violation, so the only way someone would be ticketed is if the homeowner were to call and complain on the vehicle blocking their driveway. So, we suggested if the homeowner could allow the person to park blocking their driveway, that would, might be able to meet the need. And also, this is, why didn't some of the homes on Ireland have blinded their driveways? And if we do get the Community Development Block Grant funding, that would be one of the, that would be a project that would apply to that kind of funding. So, the police department will contact this resident and give that information, and if we have any more, we'll discuss it more if, based on that discussion. Our next meeting is going to be April 24th at 5:15. That is before the April meeting. If there's no agenda items by April 10th, we will cancel. So, if anyone has any items they would like us to discuss, please have it by the work session in April. We then did go into an executive session and just got, discussed compensation of employees, and that's something that we had a good discussion on, and hopefully, we'll be able to have something coming around sooner, soon, if we need to get it in front of council. We ended at 6:53, and I will pass this all over to the acting clerk of council, so he can have my illegible, but mostly detailed notes.
So, thank you.
Uh huh. Any questions?
I do have a comment. We talked about the school and traffic safety, and at the meeting last week with the school district, there was some misinformation about the school district desiring and planning on purchasing houses on Hadley to create a second entrance onto the campus, and that is not accurate information. It is in fact misinformation. There's no such plan.
I had a comment. A neighbor approached me and in fact took me to see this in, in the Colrain area, that they have some stop signs that have some lights all around that, and they're working because they're solar. They receive the, the power from the sun. And was very much interested in finding out how much that would be because they would be even willing to donate one of those. They're really so exasperated by the situation on the Condamon Road and having a lot of small kids in there. They would have come here to present it themselves, but there was soccer night or something going on, I don't know what it is, that they were playing in the had dance and all that. But I told them that I was going to bring it forth, and if someone could find out the amount that that would cost, the feasibility of doing that, and whether or not there's any objection for a private person questioning that and seeing the possibility of funding such a thing, would like, would love to, to hear about it, and so I can pass them back to them. I would appreciate that.
And we did discuss that one of the best ways to increase traffic safety is signage, so that is something that we're very interested in.
It was, it was amazing when I saw, I had not seen it before. I, well, didn't mention anything. Suddenly, we were at the stop sign, I said, "Look at that," I said, "Oh, my gosh." I said, "That's why I came here."
Where is it located?
Um, we were going on, Colrainy was close to Pippin or something like that. But anyways, that really caught our attention.
You took the park road and went around and there?
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
Correct. Around and around, yeah, yeah.
I'll check it out.
So, that, it was really, you know, an amazing thing. And if it's something that is feasible and a private individual would be willing to pay, would that cause a problem because one street has it and another one doesn't? You know, that's your problem.
Everybody'd be free to donate.
Yeah.
Could you have something?
Yeah, I'm, I think you, sometimes you run afoul of the state, or the state approving those sort of changes. If I'm, if I'm not mistaken, the mayor brought that up when we were discussing the, the stop sign at Burley and Brompton. You know, with, with, with that, that situation, the costs of those are about $2,000. So, is, you know, they are available, but that's, that's about what they're running.
I guess my only thought is, and I think that we fully ought to evaluate this, but just because someone wants to write a check to put a sign somewhere doesn't necessarily mean that that's the best approach or that a sign's needed there.
Well, it's an existing sign.
It's an existing sign.
Sign to upgrade the sign.
We just want to upgrade the sign for the visibility, not to add another sign.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So, the manager will get some information, you can discuss it. All right, Recreation?
April 24th.
April 24th, 5:15. Recreation and Cable Television, Maria Walther.
Yeah, we're going to have the next meeting for the Way Cross, and I will be present, representing the council at 7:00 PM on the 14th of March. On March 15th at 6:30, we're going to have a Recreation Committee meeting. And following that, I have a note that is going to be, the commission will be meeting at 7:00 PM that same day on the 15th. I also wanted to bring another item to the, of dates involved in here. I also was present at the meeting of the auxiliary from the American Legion, and they're going to be having a fish fry on this Friday and consecutive Fridays as well. And this is a community event, the situation. There was an attempt to be put in the paper, and I don't know if that was feasible or not, it was on time. But it would be March the 2nd, March the 9th, March the 16th, and March the 23rd. It would be from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, and the cost would be $8. Right now, they're planning on having macaroni and cheese, two pieces of pot fish, salt, rye bread, coleslaw, and green beans, and cookies.
Okay. Comments or questions? Hearing none. We have new business. Ordinance number 2018-01-F, amending the village income tax life of the Ohio Revised Code and declaring it emergency. Mr. Dreese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a long one. Ordinance 2018-01-F, amending the village income tax code to adopt Section 718.80 through 718.95 of the Ohio Revised Code and declaring an emergency, whereas...
You don't have to read, you can suspend the reading. You can do it on, resolutions are the only ones we have to read on.
Do I have to do the whole thing because we're, it's an emergency, or no?
No. You can, if you, if your intent is to adopt it tonight, you can suspend both the rule reading it in its entirety and...
Two times and two separate. Mr. Mayor, I move that we suspend the rule requiring reading ordinance its entirety and reading it two times on two separate occasions.
And declaring emergency.
I'll second that.
Would we like to do two separate motions, one to dispense with the two reads, and then one to dispense with the full read, or is it the same?
We could do it as one.
Historically, we used to do it in one motion. Okay. Just curious. Okay. The move in seconded, clerk call the roll.
Mr. Cavode?
Aye.
Ms. Walther?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Dreese?
Aye.
And Mr. Halter.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of Ordinance 2018-01-F.
I'll second that.
All right, discussion, questions?
Please describe it.
I just found that Mr. Forbes drone on.
Drone on.
Okay. So, here's, here's why this is before you tonight. We've talked about this before. House Bill 49 had some requirements in it related to centralized collection of municipal income tax. And as we've discussed, a number of communities, I, I think the last time I looked, it was, I think in excess of 150 municipalities have filed various lawsuits across the state challenging the constitutionality of those collection provisions, basically arguing that it violates the municipal home rule authority found in the Ohio Constitution. And so, lawsuit was filed, and originally, House Bill 49 said you were supposed to adopt these, some required changes by January 31st. After the litigation was filed, the deadline was extended so that a motion for an injunction could be, they could have a hearing, and the judge would have time to rule on it. Last week, the judge ruled on the injunction request and denied the injunction. And in fact, went one more step, not only denied the injunction, but also ruled on the merits of the case, and ruled in favor of the state of Ohio on all claims, which basically means all of the reasons that the municipalities raised in challenging these collection provisions have all been defeated at the trial court. As a result, a couple of things will happen. One is, those lawsuits, the attorneys handling those lawsuits have already indicated they'll be filing an appeal. It hasn't, they have 30 days to file that, so it hasn't happened yet. When they file that appeal, they will also request a stay from the trial court or the Court of Appeals, whichever is appropriate. You have to request the stay from the trial court first. If the trial court denies it, you can request it at the Court of Appeals. So, we will continue to monitor that and see what happens on that litigation front. In the meantime, though, we are left in this position that now some of the provisions of House Bill 49 require you to take action related to your municipal income tax code. And that's the, that's what Ordinance 2018-01-F does. I would point out that there is language in the ordinance, specifically Section 5 of the ordinance, that provides that if any of the provisions of House Bill 49 are found to be, are found to be unconstitutional, so as it goes up on appeal, the Court of Appeals could reverse. If there's any stay that's issued, or if there's any additional injunction that gets issued, then anything you adopt in this ordinance would likewise be stayed. So, we've got that sort of protection in here. But in the meantime, to avoid any risk of confusion, our advice is go ahead and adopt the ordinance. That solidifies your ability to continue doing your income tax. If it gets reversed, we can take care of that at the appropriate time.
Isn't this pretty discouraging news from a home rule point of view?
Yeah.
Yes. I mean, short answer is yes. The, I'm happy to share a copy of that decision if anybody wants to see it, but it was, certainly, it was, what the judge starts off saying is, here's what the home rule amendment of the Constitution states, and if that's all I was looking at, it would seem like you municipalities had a good argument. But then he refers to another section of the Ohio Constitution that purports to allow the state to regulate the levying of taxes. So, basically, the judge said, if I was only, if I were only looking at the home rule provision, you would win, but because there's this other provision that's in conflict, that one has to take precedence, so you lose. There's more to it than that, but that's it in a nutshell.
I have a couple of questions for you. When are those 30 days, when are those up?
The decision came out Wednesday of last week, I think that was the 21st.
To the 21st of March.
So...
According to this action that we're taking now, when are our monies will have to be sent to Columbus?
Well, okay, that's the other thing to point out. Remember, all this does is it allows certain taxpayers, and this only applies to corporate net profit filings, it allows them to file with the Ohio Business Gateway. So, if none of your corporate taxpayers choose to do that, it won't make any difference to you. It's only if some of those folks choose to start doing it through the Business Gateway, which, by the way, they've already been able to do. They've already been able to file through the Business Gateway previously, and as I understand it, I don't think any of them necessarily do that.
I'm not sure there's an advantage for them to do that.
Without getting...
Yes.
I'll try to hold back the commentary, but typically, where this is a benefit to a corporate taxpayer is if they have locations all over the state of Ohio. And that instead of filing in each separate municipality, it allows them to file in one centralized location. So, that may be where there might be some benefit to a corporate taxpayer.
Yet, yet we, we sense that this will end up being the personal taxes at some point.
Good stretch to that.
We have anticipated that if they're successful with, with this, let's watch next year's budget bill and see what other changes are made.
State, the state, the state.
All right, clerk call the roll.
Mr. Cavode?
Aye.
Ms. Walther?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Dreese?
Aye.
And Mr. Halter.
Aye. Okay, Ordinance 2018-01-F passes. Next ordinance, 2018-02-LNR, amending Section 505 of the Village of Green Hills codified ordinance to include restrictions on tethering dogs. Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the first reading and title only. Ordinance number 2018-02-LNR, amending Section 505 of the Village of Green Hills codified ordinance to include restrictions on tethering dogs.
All right. Next ordinance.
Since we mentioned it, can we just kind of mention what it's about so people know when we vote on it next week?
Sure.
I know tethering, I saw people had some concerns that it meant being in the fenced yard. That's not what it means. It just means actually tethered, correct?
Right. For an extended period of time. Basically, it allows our police officers and other related entities to intervene in defense of an animal that's being abused.
Next ordinance, 2018-03-LNR, first reading. This is a repeal Chapter 745 of the Village of Green Hills codified ordinance regarding marketplace sales. Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is first reading and title only. Ordinance 2018-03-LNR, repealing Chapter 745 of the Village of Green Hills codified ordinances regarding marketplace sales. This is first reading.
And you also let us know a little bit of what...
Sure. Well, what this is doing is eliminating a section that's currently in the codified ordinances regarding the use of the marketplace behind the shopping center. And instead of having a separate chapter specifically for that, we're eliminating that section and allowing that to be addressed as the gazebo or the picnic shelter, as a village-owned property.
Next one, the Resolution 2018-06-F, resolution making supplemental appropriations and transfers. Mr. Drees, and you do get to read this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2018-06-F, resolution making supplemental appropriations and transfers, whereas the 2,000 annual appropriations that were adopted on December 12, 2017 are to be amended, and whereas appropriations must not exceed total available resources of the village per Ohio Revised Code, Section 5705.36A5, therefore, an amended certificate of estimated resources has been requested from the County Budget Commission. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of Village of Green Hills, Ohio, that's Section 1. Since certain actions are needed in the monies appropriated so to permit the Village of Green Hills to meet its fiscal obligations for the year 2018, the following items of expenditure are to supplement the appropriations for expenditure for the year 2018. Fund 1,000, general fund, post office personnel services, appropriation $600, change $200, total $800. Fund 1,000, general fund, post office other, appropriation $100, change $500, total $600. Fund 1,000, general fund, land and buildings other, appropriation $236,815, change $120,000, total $356,815. Fund 1,000, general fund, capital outlay, appropriation $70,000, change $60,000, total $130,000. Section 2, this resolution shall take effect and be in full force from and after the earliest date allowed by law. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
Passed and seconded. Discussion?
Do you guys want any details on...
I would.
Okay. Oh, one, two? I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Okay. All right. The post office ones are really just kind of close-out kinds of expenses that fell into this year. And the other items, both under capital, the general fund, land and buildings, and capital outlay, and I think we reviewed all these at the retreat, are items that we have talked about doing this year but have not been put into the appropriations, so this puts them into the appropriations.
Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Cavode.
Aye.
Ms. Walther.
Aye.
Ms. Hermes.
Aye.
Mr. Lee.
Aye.
Mr. Drees.
Aye.
And Mr. Halter.
Aye.
Resolution number 2018-06-F passes. Next resolution, 2018-07-SNS, resolution authorizing assessments on certain properties in the Village of Green Hills. Mr. Cavode.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 2018-07-SNS, resolution authorizing assessments on certain properties in the Village of Green Hills, whereas the village has given proper notice to the owners of certain real property in the Village of Green Hills regarding the removal of vegetation, refuse, garbage, and/or debris from the properties listed below, and whereas the owners of said properties did not take action to remedy the violations, and therefore, the Village of Green Hills contracted to remove vegetation, refuse, garbage, and/or debris, and now sinks to collect said expenses by authorizing the placement of a lien upon the lands and collect it as other taxes. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the Village of Green Hills, a majority of which concur that Section 1, the village council hereby certifies that the cost of such labor, together with the expenses relative thereto, be filed on the return and statement to the Hamilton County Commissioners as an assessment against the properties listed and placed as a lien against the properties by the auditor of the Hamilton County, Ohio, as follows. 28 Barnum Street. Owner, Amy Lukin, cost $268.59. Section 2, all amounts collected as a result of this resolution shall be placed into the general fund of the Village of Green Hills. Section 3, this resolution shall be effective immediately upon its passage. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
I believe this one was a collection of garbage, wasn't it? That somewhat occurred. Mm. Collection.
Okay. All right. Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Cavode.
Aye.
Ms. Walther.
Aye.
Ms. Hermes.
Aye.
Mr. Lee.
Aye.
Mr. Drees.
Aye.
And Mr. Halter.
Aye.
Resolution number 2018-07-SNS passes. All right. We have, I have a question. This list, everyone's reappointed, is that what it is?
Oh, just one new appointment.
Oh, just one new appointment.
Correct.
Okay.
And the rest are reappointments every few years.
Okay. So we have...
On the new appointment, I was going to make the motion to present it to the mayor.
Right. You can go ahead and make that motion now for...
And that is for Dan Dorfman to be appointed as our liaison from the Village of Green Hills to Waycross. And I would like the mayor to consider that.
Well, yeah. It is. We need a second to your motion.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then I need a motion to appoint Beth Bolce Owens to the Community Reinvestment Area Housing Council.
Second.
No, you had the first. What was it?
I make a motion that we appoint Beth Bolce, B-O-L-C-E-Owens, O-W-E-N-S, to the Community Reinvestment Area.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. All right. Calendar?
Laws and Rules, Monday, March 26, 9:00 AM.
Waycross meeting, March 14 at 7:00. Recreation Committee, March 15, 6:30. Recreation Commission, March 15 at 7:00. Please support the Hugh Watson American Legion Post 530 for the fish fry. There's also the, it falls into this, I believe, the 1st of April for April Fool's Day, but also the September Easter Sunday, and we will have our egg hunt at the commons area from the fire department. So let's not forget that. And please...
The egg hunt is on April Fool's Day?
April Fool's Day, yeah.
So it's, yeah, it's on April Fool's.
So we're just going to have kids show up and there's no eggs, is that...
No, that would be too mean. And also, there's going to be a change of time this Sunday.
Spring forward.
Yeah, yeah, spring forward.
Is it this Sunday or is it next Sunday?
It's the 10th. Is it the... Is it the 10th?
I thought it was this Sunday.
No, I think it's the 10th.
Oh, okay. I was so hopeful, spring forward. Are you sure?
Yeah, it's...
Check your smoke, protect your batteries, whatever weekend you decide to do that thing at 8 o'clock.
Is that the 10th, though?
Saturday, the 10th.
March 29, community development, as it stands right now, at 9, or at 5:15.
That it? Okay. Meeting's adjourned.